Good evening. Welcome to the July 12th Northampton School Committee's special meeting. I'm Jean-Louise Sharra, and I will be presiding. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. And I will begin by asking the clerk to please call the role of the school committee.
Mayor Sharra. I think we need to start the recording, sorry.
Recording in progress.
Member Robbins?
I'm here.
Member Gacy?
Yes, indeed.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Present.
Member Stein?
I haven't seen him yet.
Member Levy?
Present.
Member Miller?
Present.
Member Goldman?
Present.
Member Agna?
Present.
Member Davis?
Present.
Your Honor, you have a form.
Thank you. Okay, so our first item is discussion and possible vote to approve the contract. The school committee has been made aware of this, but I'll make everyone else who's here aware of it. I spoke with Jake Eberwine earlier today after speaking with him on Friday and meeting with him yesterday. He strongly considered the offer, and he was very, I think genuinely torn, but feels he needs to see through his work with the Berkshire County Regional School District Planning Board and the project that he's been working on for quite a while now and is nearing its culmination in the fall. So he is declining the position of interim superintendent. He very enthusiastically thanked me and wanted to be sure that I shared with the committee his thanks and his heartfelt regret that he will not be joining us. So with that, we can move on to our second item on the agenda, which is a discussion and possible vote to authorize the mayor, me, to enter into negotiations with a chosen interim superintendent candidate and therefore offer the position to one of the two candidates that were interviewed by us last Thursday. I spoke with both on Friday, and both indicated that they would be open to being approached if our negotiations weren't successful with the chosen candidate. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion or if there's a motion. Member Goldman?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to offer the interim superintendent position to Dr. Pearson Campbell.
Second.
Motion's been made by Member Goldman, seconded by my member Levy. Member Goldman, is there anything you wanted to add?
Um, you know, actually, I didn't explain as much with my vote at the last meeting, but I really believe that she was the candidate that had the very best fit for us. Her sort of organizational awareness and the way that she's aligned with our district goals at this point, as well as her real commitment to focusing, bringing a lot of attention and focus on the welfare of students and healing, I think, is really critical. I think she's an excellent match for the district, and that's why I voted for her and why I'm making this motion this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Member Goldman. Member Levy?
Thank you. I, before speaking about the candidate, just want to make a brief comment about our process and how I believe perhaps it landed us in this bit of division that we're currently experiencing in our community in hopes of maybe ameliorating it in the future. At work, I require all searches to use a rubric, which is a document that clearly outlines the criteria search committees deem essential for someone to be able to perform the job well, as well as documenting how and why each candidate was rated the way they are or they were. If ever a candidate is chosen over another candidate, one can look at the rubric to ensure bias didn't play a role in the decision and to understand. We didn't use a rubric, and while I think we were relatively on the same page as a committee in thinking about what we were looking for in the interim role due to the conversation we had when writing the job description, I think it left the public in the dark in terms of what many of us were looking for in this role, and it left them wondering whether bias did play a role. And so I hope moving forward, we can make sure we're implementing a rubric. And obviously, on Thursday, we'll talk about working with search firms, who will also guide us through the next search that we're going to engage in. I think members of the public watched us wrestle with the decision about who to initially offer the role to, because it was a hard one, because we were lucky that we had three strong candidates. And I too see strengths in Dr. Pearson Campbell and am excited to support her in the role.
Thank you. Member Seraphie Cox?
Thank you. I definitely support what Member Levy was just talking about. And in my professional life, I've been on search committees, but I usually worked for organizations that are so small that they haven't had the or they haven't been well organized enough to even get to that point. So I haven't experienced the rubric myself, but having, like, talked to folks who that is standard for their practice, I see its value absolutely, and I'm excited for the next stage that we could implement that in our next process. And I'm thinking that if I'm ever in charge of hiring, I will definitely implement it and I'll yes. So that's what I wanted to say about Member Levy's words. I also, I, as every member of this committee did, I received, you know, many communications over the last few days. And so I wanted to start by, start my comments about this by thanking the people who have reached out to me with their thoughts about this interim superintendent search process. I've heard a healthy mixture of compassion, anger, confusion, frustration, curiosity, and above all, a commitment to making the Northampton Public Schools better for all our students. The conversation people brought to me and to all of us about how white supremacy plays out in the decision-making of this committee is one that I welcome. It is a hard conversation with many opportunities to hurt each other. I have felt a mixture of many emotions over the last few days, including hers. However, I know that not having this conversation hurts more, and my comfort is not worth others' pain. So this all hits very close to home for me. As the mother of a kid of color and the partner of a person of color, I have had to interrupt a lot of my own actions and attitudes that came from deeply ingrained white supremacy. I continue to do this in order to cultivate respectful and supportive relationships with these people that I deeply love. Democracy, too, is about relationships built on respect. If we, as a democratically elected body, don't interrogate and interrupt our actions and attitudes that come from the white supremacy ingrained in each of us, we are hurting our own democratic process. I've spent a lot of time reflecting on the actions and attitudes each of us displayed at our last meeting, myself included. Regardless of what happens with our current interim superintendent hiring, I think it is imperative that we, as a committee, engage in both anti-bias, anti-racist training as we are asking our employees and students to do, and also for us to use this opportunity to reflect on how we can unearth and interrupt white supremacy in our decision-making, on all different kinds of decisions. I would like to ask our vice chair, Member Agna, to make our next retreat focused on anti-bias, anti-racist training and that the development of our committee norms, which I know was on the agenda for the retreat that had to be canceled, that the development of those committee norms should be done through the lens of this anti-bias, anti-racist training. If we are going to truly implement our district improvement plan, which focuses so heavily on these values, this sort of work is imperative. If we are going to achieve our goal of hiring and retaining employees of color at all levels in this district, we need to prepare the ground so that Northampton Public Schools and its school committee is a place that makes people of color, people of all different walks of life feel valued and able to grow. This work begins with us, the current leaders of the school community. I humbly share these comments with the utmost respect for my fellow committee members, the employees of our district, and all the members of our school community. I also want to say that I'm excited to support Member Goldman's motion.
Thank you, Member Seraphie Cox. Member Agna?
I also wanted to thank Member Levy for her guidance here in our process, and I think it's going to be very important for us to keep that in mind when we go forward with the permanent. And I also will take your advice and request, Member Levy, I mean, sorry, Member Seraphie Cox, in making sure that our retreat has elements that you've described. And I also will just echo the enthusiasm that I did express in our last meeting about Dr. Pearson Campbell. I think she will be great. I think it's really important for the public to know that there were three finalists who we felt were very qualified, and it was a very hard decision. I'm not going to talk about anybody's motives or possible underlying anything, but I would just like to say that I'm very confident that, given the fact that we screened the candidates and we were very careful in making sure who was a finalist could assume the role of interim, I'm happy that we're going to go forward with this possible vote to instruct the mayor to negotiate a contract with Dr. Pearson Campbell. I'm grateful to her for saying that she would still like to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Agna. Member Stein?
Thank you. Sorry about that. I've been moved by my colleagues' comments and really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the reflection. And I was really struck by Member Levy's, I think, accurate description that I think many of us in the committee probably had an idea of the candidate we were looking for or the qualifications of the type of candidate we're looking for based on that process of putting the job description together. And I think that probably, as you said, Member Levy, resulted in the vote. And I think it's probably a good idea to make, I think, what the assumption was, at least for myself, looking at the candidates' resumes, their cover letters, and their interviews. I think it might be nice to make that explicit for folks. It's like you maybe understand more, because I think you're right, that a lot of people didn't watch that or have it in mind in the way that we all did. But, you know, it's no secret, our district is facing a number of very significant challenges, a number of significantly difficult decisions, and we're left in a very short amount of time to have to find an interim superintendent. So to have three candidates, like, I was afraid our structure produced no one. We're open for about two weeks, so to get, like, a large pool of candidates that then could be reduced down and present us with a number to choose from was extremely relieving and really sort of uplifting from my perspective. So that was really great. And I think one of the things that really resonated for me with Dr. Eberwine, knowing the challenges that we have in front of us and what we're really looking for in interim superintendent to do, was his deep wealth of executive experience, whether as a superintendent or as a principal in multiple stents or as a dean at a college or as a consultant for a multi-district initiative. And that's pretty significant experience that not all candidates share. And I do think, at least in my thinking, that that, in addition to his interview, made me feel like he was the right choice for us, given the challenges we face. I don't know if others are feeling that way. It seems like that might be the case given the vote. But I think really thinking about that experience and what we need right now was driving the decision, and I hope that, however the vote happens tonight, we do consider the other candidate that was also qualified and also had many years of experience as a superintendent and think about this choice we have tonight. So that's all I want to offer. Hopefully, I think it may give at least some context from my perspective from the community, but I am grateful for all of you and the thoughtfulness you bring to the work and for the engagement of the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Miller?
I just wanted to say that I'm grateful for the conversations and the input that we received from the community, and I felt their, you know, concern and their pain. And as I had said last time, I was really torn myself. So I really value that we will now have someone who can help with healing our community and who will be able to address all kinds of bias and anti-racist work. And I'm glad that this is going to work out this way, but I really appreciate the comments from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Miller. Okay, I don't see any. Member Robbins?
In respect to the motion that's on the table, my concern, and I welcome Dr. Pearson Campbell, but my concern is still about experience and where we are and how we need to get the school year started and not knowing the length of time between now and then when we have a new superintendent in place. And could I suggest or ask if it's possible to explore the idea of providing Dr. Pearson Campbell with a mentor? I don't know how, as a new superintendent, you do all the stuff you need to do without being able to turn to somebody who's done it and say, hey, what did you do? How did that work? Where do I go next? And I think it's a really awkward position to be in, no matter who you are. And I don't, I think there are services that supply that mentoring, or she might have somebody in mind, too, that she could turn to in a formal way, but I don't want to put her in a position where she feels like she has to do a job that she may not have had responsibility for before. This will be her first time as a superintendent. I don't believe she's been an assistant superintendent for very long. She's clearly smart. She's clearly capable, but none of us should be put into the position of having all the answers.
Member Levy?
Thanks. I really, really appreciate where you're coming from with that suggestion, Member Robbins, and I understand, I understand it, I believe, to a certain extent. I have a coach myself who's the best, and it's amazing to have somebody who I can turn to and talk to about what's going on at work and help give me an outsider perspective. That said, I think everybody should have a coach because they're the best. And I worry about the message that it would send to, sorry, it's bedtime. Nobody's happy about that. Hope it's not too loud for you. I worry about the message that it would send to Dr. Pearson Campbell that perhaps we don't have faith in her abilities. You know, perhaps at some point, we could offer a coach or a mentor, but I worry in giving the offer to her at this point, along with the job offer, that it would send a message that we don't, we don't believe she can do it. And I think all of us, well, I'm going to speak for myself. I believe, even though she hasn't been a superintendent, she's been an assistant superintendent and brings quite a number of strengths. And again, I would love to offer that support at some point, but I personally wouldn't want to do it right now.
Thank you, Member Levy. Member Goldman?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Member Levy. I believe that Dr. Pearson Campbell is qualified for the position. That's why I'm suggesting we offer her the position. And I also believe that she is resourced and able to ask for what she needs, as I hope every educator in our community feels, that they feel that they are resourced and they feel that when they need support, they can ask for it. So I don't think there's any need to sort of have conversation about that at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Seraphie Cox?
Yeah, I basically, Member Goldman said much of what I was thinking, and especially the part about that, I think, asking whoever comes into this role, what, you know, however this vote goes, what they need in the position. Because I didn't see interim superintendent on anybody's resume. So that in and of itself would be new to all three of them. And between the two remaining candidates, remember, sorry, Dr. Pearson Campbell is my preferred candidate of the two, just to speak to Member Stein's suggestion.
Thank you. Member Davis?
Thank you. I had a few little thoughts regarding the mentor idea. I think Dr. Pearson Campbell is, was an excellent candidate, and I'm grateful that both other candidates agreed to be considered should the other contract, should the other negotiations not work out. But I, what Member Levy said resonated with me about that it might send the wrong message, on the other hand. And my first thought was, if she were a man, would we have said that? Maybe, maybe not. That's always my knee-jerk go-to for myself of, if that had been a man, would we have said that? But the other thought is, I'm not a superintendent. I don't know, in those circles, perhaps it's common to have mentors. Like, when you're at the top of a game, like, principals in a community have each other. For example, if they've not been assigned a mentor, teachers, the whole bunch of us, we have each other if we haven't been assigned a mentor, if that's not a program in your district or in your office or your job of whatever kind. When somebody is at the top of their game, so to speak, like a superintendent, where she's the only one, perhaps there's a network built in that she knows about to go say, hey, what do you do? But perhaps not. So it just made me wonder, you know, who does the mayor ask for questions? You know, she's the only mayor. Who does a superintendent ask? So I think it's potentially a valid question to at least make sure that we would say to whoever is there, what do you need? If not, assign somebody to say, to make sure that nobody is set up to fail, because I think that's what, I think, Member Robbins was kind of getting at, too, of making sure she has what she needs in that position.
Thank you, Member Davis. Thank you, member Davis. I, um, I do nothing but ask questions all day long of anyone who will stand still enough for me to ask them of them. Uh, member Levy?
Thanks. I just wanted to thank you, member Davis, for following member Seraphie Cox's lead and asking hard questions and pushing us to think about our biases. And I agree with your last statement. Um, I agree with what all that you said and asking what do you need for support, um, I think is a good approach.
Thank you, member Stein. The member Agna?
Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to follow up. Um, this isn't a friendly amendment yet, because I don't actually know how to formulate it. So maybe, uh, in, in terms of the order of things. But I'm wondering, given the, um, given the already, um, rocky process in terms of negotiation, and we're back here tonight and we scheduled a meeting last night in case, and we have this meeting, I'm wondering, um, if it's, um, useful for us as a committee, um, if, if we vote, however the vote goes on this motion, um, well, I guess it depends. Like, I, I'm imagining from what I'm hearing that it sounds like this motion will pass. And assuming that it does pass, I'm wondering if we should also vote to authorize the mayor to extend an offer to, um, uh, Dr. DeLea, um, the other candidate as well, so that we don't have to come back to authorize that. Um, so in, in, like, in other words, like, if, if the negotiation, i- if the vote is positive for making an offer to Dr. Pearson Campbell, and then that negotiation falls apart for whatever reason, we wouldn't have to do this all over again. Is that, so, I don't know if people are comfortable with this. I just want to put it out there as an idea that we maybe take a second vote to authorize the mayor to extend an offer, uh, to our third candidate as well, in the event that it's necessary.
Thank you, member Agna.
I just want to call the vote, if we could, so we could get on with it. And, um, I understand, member Stein, your concern, but I think, I think respectfully, I would like to just call the vote and see where we go.
Um, so if there are no further comments, then we won't vote to call the question. Um, uh, just quickly, so we, um, to member Stein's point, it would be noticed for, I think it's already noticed for the Thursday meeting in, in case. But, um, yes, we would have to wait till Thursday to take that vote. Um, okay, so if there's no further comments, roll call, please, Annie. You're muted, Annie.
Sorry about that. Member Agna?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Robbins?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
And member Agna?
Yes, twice. I got to vote twice tonight.
Oh, did I call you first? Sorry about that one.
That's okay.
You're very important.
And member Davis? Member Davis needs to be called.
Member Davis?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that.
Everyone called with the right number of votes? Excellent.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, then, now our next item is to go into executive session. We will be adjourning from executive session and not coming back into open session. Would someone like to make a motion? I know, I know, you're looking at language. Whoever gets it first, go for it.
Motion, uh, request to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contact negotiations with non-union personnel in Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declare.
Chair does so declare. Is there a second?
Second.
There's just a maiden seconded. Any discussion on entering executive session? Seeing none, roll call, please, Annie.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Shara?
Yes.
Member Robbins?
Yes.
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
And member Levy?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to enter executive session. And again, we will adjourn from there.
Recording stopped.
Be coming back into open session. So thank you for everyone who joined us this evening. We will say goodnight. And, um, let's be on the lookout here, let me.